This conference will now be recorded.
The House of Representatives can get out tonight.
That'll be on our next.
I stand in.
This is from Tim from the land for next week.
That's for next week.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything I have to do to add to your plate, you know, happy to do this.
Happy to look watch.
Happy to build it up.
I'm just kidding.
Kevin, you didn't buy my groceries.
Walmart.
No. No, I saw you at Walmart.
I was gonna say, oh. Sounded like a conflict.
What do nations see in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands? One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody, to the May 20th Board meeting. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Tony's not here, so, okay, all right, go. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, motion carries. Number three, ISAC Years of Service Award Honor for Travis.
We did miss one, so we'd like to honor Travis for 10 years, so Ben will accept that one for him. We did miss one.
Travis couldn't be with us today.
Okay, well.
Yes.
How many years?
10.
10, cool, all right. Thanks. Number four, consent agenda, Tuesday, May 13th, board minutes, claims for payments.
So moved.
Second. Okay, motion in a second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Number five is claims for the new building, Geo Tech Mix, 1,005,9725, another Geo Tech Mix, 1,007,8725, SG Construction, 186, 19905, and another for SG Construction, 77, 77650.
I move to approve the claims for the new building.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Oh, there's time. Okay, motion carries. Okay, public input. You weren't here, so I didn't amend the agenda, but we can talk about now, yeah.
You're in public input?
Yep.
Okay. My name is Tony, I'm the 911 Director for Lee County, LeeCom, the Public Safety Answering Point. I was here last week to warn the board about some pending legislation. I also told you during last week's meeting that I was advised by our representative that that was dead in the water, it did not have legs. A lot changes in a week. Two days later, I got an email at about 4:30 in the morning saying, hey, a bill passed. It was an appropriations bill, an SF 659. That appropriations bill did not put a specified split in the percentage of 911 surcharge funds that come back to Lee County for the 911 Service Board. So instead, they put language in an appropriations bill that allows the Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management for Iowa to bill the Lee County 911 Service Board for services rendered for the taking or disposition of 911 calls, and we have to pay the State Department money back that they bill us. The only provision that is in the legislation is that we have to pay the bill in 30 days. Other than that, there's no other language as to what they can charge us for, how much notice we'll get, other than the 30 days. So I was on the phone a lot last week, talking with legislatures, even though the session has ended, they're aware of the problem that this causes, both locally and across the state. Yesterday, there was a large press conference in Des Moines at the Polk County Sheriff's Office. It's the first time, I think, a lot of people have seen a cohort of first responders all get behind one thing. They're calling on the governor to essentially veto this line item of the appropriations bill that passed. There's no word yet on whether or not that's gonna happen, or if it's being entertained. I'm not sure what the process is on that, but I was asked him to come today to give you an update on that. Also, I prepared a letter. I've sent several to representatives and senators across Iowa. This one's directed towards the governor, essentially outlining our concerns with the funding, or the lack thereof, for transparency. I would like the board to review it and possibly sign off on sending a letter opposing this bill. It's SF 659, Division 12, Section 22. So I can answer any questions, or I can try my best to answer questions, but I did it, WGM had an interview with me yesterday. They got, they did get a comment from Representative Watkins. It sounds like Representative Watkins's concern is that it's taxpayer money. I would argue with that a little bit, but even if I give him the benefit of the doubt, and it is, if you want to classify it as taxpayer money, they're taking Lee County taxpayer money and sending it to Des Moines. So I will fight that with him in his rhetoric, that even if they do want to classify that as tax dollars, it's Lee County tax dollars, and they're gonna spend it in Des Moines for, with no oversight, so.
Yeah, I did watch that, you had shared it on Facebook.
Yep.
It was really good. They, Anne Boyne had said that too, that you guys have like a million dollars or whatever.
So I believe, I shouldn't even give you the exact number, I believe we started this fiscal year with over 1.1 million dollars.
Okay, but that is for?
Towers.
Several things. So when we built the radio, when we first signed on to upgrading our radio system, it was a 4.7 billion dollar project. Part of that comes with a Motorola service agreement. So they come in, they service our towers, they service the dispatch consoles of LeeCom, they take care of all the maintenance. So, for instance, we had two things get hit by lightning. I called Motorola, they kind of took the ball and ran with it, they did everything. That contract comes with a price. Year one, it's $235,000. We knew that when we built this project, knowing that we had reserve funding set aside to pay the first five years, and then we would either sign a new contract, a different contract, come up with a new vendor, not for sure what that looks like, because we're only in year two. That bill actually goes down steadily over the next three years. I think our last payment in the last year is $197,000, so it does go down a bit. But in five years, at the end of five years, costs are gonna be more expensive, so I don't anticipate that $197,000, I think that'll be the lowest number we'll see under a maintenance contract. There are other maintenance contracts that we have that are gonna be coming due. We signed on to the 911 Shared Services Platform. There are phone equipment that we use to receive 911 calls. It's a shared services agreement, we pay a portion of the contract, and then the state picks up the rest. I think this is what got the Department of Homeland Security in a pickle, too many people signed on to this program, and they didn't have the funds to pick up their portion. So now they're asking us, even though we signed a five-year contract, now they're saying we need more. So at the end of five years, I'm assuming that number's gonna go up. So all of this money that we spend out of the 911 Service Board is not taxpayer dollars, it comes off of your cell phone bill or your home landline bill. When you call 911, you're paying for that phone to connect to us. If they don't fix the formula or increase the surcharge, eventually those costs are going to land on taxpayers. I don't think anybody wants to take a position of we're not gonna answer 911 calls in Lee County. Des Moines County's gonna handle it, or Henry County, or. Eventually, something's gotta give. I heard $1.25 was what the increase was gonna be. Simple math tells me that's $3 a year per phone line that you have. Chris Jasper is the Muscatine County PSAP Director, he said that's the cost of a small latte that you pay once a year to enhance the 911 system. I have a family plan, I have five lines online, that's an extra $15 a year to make sure that my phone dials 911, gets routed to the direct PSAP that's fully staffed in order to get me help, so. That's kind of a broad overview of the issue. The governor has 30 days to sign the appropriations bill. I haven't heard any news today as to whether or not that's happened yet, but we're trying to at least get the word out, because a lot of people don't know that this exists.
So if we zoom out as to why they're needing to do this, because, I mean, right now, we're focused on, rightfully so, how it affects us. If we flip it and how it affects them, because we, our system has to plug into their system, correct?
Yes.
So our system plugged into their system, basically, and correct me anywhere in here if I'm wrong, because it's on my little brain boards here. They don't have enough money to keep their system running.
Correct.
So they are looking for funds. So rather than looking for funds at the state level, they're looking for funds within the counties and taking their money to fund that, versus either taxing more at the state level, or reaching into the reserve fund to make the shortfall, because they offered lots of incentives at the state level for counties just to transfer over, to transfer over to 911 digital. And when we did that, we were given certain guarantees that said, hey, we're gonna pay for this, 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 and this, and you're gonna pay for all this other stuff. And what they had was they had too many counties, they didn't anticipate as many counties signing on as signed on, so their funding is short. And so they've gotta find a way to make up that funding so that they can provide the counties with what they said, but their their thought process in doing that is, we'll just take it from the counties.
So.
Is that, I mean, is that in a nutshell?
So the watered-down version of that, even thinking one step further, is the state of Iowa is upset because we have a surplus of 1.1 million dollars, and that's not fair to taxpayers.
Because we're planning.
Because we're planning, and we're being fiscal responsible, it's not fair for us to have it, but it is fair for the state to have it, and for the Department of Homeland Security to have it. Because what this bill also has language in there is it says, at the end of the fiscal year, if there's a surplus of funds within the Department of Homeland Security, they issue grants back to the PSAP, so my department, to buy equipment or to save for upgrades. That's law now, this new law says they don't have to do that anymore. So if there's an excess revenue, they don't do anything with it, they get to keep it. So now they have a chance to have a surplus, but they're penalizing us for having a surplus.
And eliminating the possibility for you to access that surplus for planning purposes.
Correct. And that's the biggest thing. So, you know, I said last week, our budget for 911, and this is just for the Service Board, not my department. It's 385,000, we're anticipating $317,000 of revenue now. Well, I don't know what the state's gonna bill us, so it's impossible for us to budget what the state might bill us. So our budget may be $425,000, so we can't spend money out of the 911 Board funds to pay for things like updated street signs, which is something we want to tackle this year in some of the townships that are missing them. That's, that responsibility lies on the 911 Board. That's $10,000 that we're finally investing into that system to make sure that our fire trucks, and our ambulances, and our cop cars can get to your address by following the street signs. That, that may sound, that might be something we had to put on the back burner for another year. We've allocated $10,000 for that, that might not get done, because we don't know what's gonna happen at the state.
So do we have that $7 million that we've got sitting there, do we have that annotated as to what we intend to spend that for? Or do we have a group that said, hey, this much is going to this, this much is going to that? If we don't, I think we probably should.
Yes.
Just so that later on, we can defend it. If we don't have it, then we've gotta go ask them to, hey, we would have had it, but we don't have it.
Like, we had this line item in our reserve, if you will.
Right, but if we just say reserve, what I, what I would say is, what we need to do is, we probably need to, that million dollars, 25% of it's gonna go for disaster tower, whatever, you know, 25% is gonna go for equipment repairs, 25% is gonna go for software upgrades, whatever, as long as we get 100% of whatever we got in there covered, this is what we're spending it on. So they don't think that we're just sitting on a million bucks that we're not, we have big plans for, because it's not a million dollars extra. It's a million dollars that we're already spent, but we haven't spent it until two or three or four years from now. Now what they're wanting to do is take it now, and then we're gonna have to figure out how we pay the bill, which you're already doing that, as you should. But what they see is a million dollars sitting there.
And this bill is gonna be coming in F. 26.
Yeah, it'll take effect July 1st.
Yeah.
Do most counties have a reserve like that?
So the statewide total is $66,900 in reserves for 911 Service Boards. A majority of that, the largest, I think, don't quote me on this, but I think the largest fund exists in Polk County.
I'm sure.
Which is where 98% of this problem stems from. We, in the 911 world, we call it the state of Iowa versus the state of Polk, because there's a constant battle between those two agencies, and everyone else outside of Polk County kind of gets hit by debris, and we feel the effects of it. I think that's what's happening.
What if you went ahead and spent it? Get your signs, go ahead and, why?
So, I mean, we could.
Because you're still gonna have bills coming in.
But if they see that you have less, what are they gonna do?
You can't get a lot out of the turnip, right?
I think they'll expect.
Right.
They'll just pick it up.
Yeah.
So, and we still got the billing issue, and I guess the thing that I'm looking at is, if there is no, if there's an, when you create a law like that, and you do it at the 11th hour, which they did, obviously, you know. Yeah, or the 0430 hour, you don't necessarily put a lot of thought into it. And so what I see is, is that we've created a law that says, we're gonna send you a bill, and you're gonna pay it, you got 30 days to pay it, and that fixes all our problems.
If you don't.
The problem is, the problem is, does that bill have to be consistent? So are they charging Polk, but they're charging Lee, and if they're charging, you know, so who's charging who? Or are we charging based on, on somebody's reserve?
Yeah.
And so I, I, I feel for, I can see both sides of this issue, I honestly can, because somehow they've gotta pay the bill too. Because if they don't, we can't, we can't plug in, right? If they, if they fail, they can't pay their bills, then we'd have nothing to plug into, and by proxy, our system doesn't work either. So they've gotta come up with the money, it's just how they're coming up with the money. And I, and so I, I think that while I wanna be very pushback-ish and very, what are you doing to us? I also go, wait a minute, you guys have got, somehow you've gotta pay the bill too, because otherwise, our system failed, because we have the best.
The state has a pretty large reserve.
They do. And that's the point that I made, that's the point I made with Boyne, is, you know, because I did talk with Representative Watkins, and interestingly, he was the only one, and kudos to him for doing that. But that was my, was my point, is that, A, it seems like a lot of times, the state will pass laws and then, but they want you to pay for them. So it feels very much like an unfunded mandate again. You know, hey, we don't have the funds for it, so we're gonna figure out how we're gonna get the funds out of the people that have got funds. So versus using their, but it's an issue, I think we do need to push back, and just say, hey, there needs to be some thought put into this. It doesn't mean that, you know, potentially, we can't help, but the whole weight of this thing should not be placed on the counties, it just shouldn't.
Right, and to kind of answer Denise's question about spending it, I think we'd probably look at a five-year projection, and probably pay ahead on contracts and services that we have, and spend some of that funding down. My concern is, is after those contracts ends, I've never signed a maintenance contract that's gone down after a renewal period. I would, I would say that's equal to assuming your health insurance premiums are gonna go down, or you're, you know, that's not gonna happen. Yeah, so the easy solution is to raise the surcharge. It hasn't raised in 12 years. My argument is, it should have been, and I think this is probably a similar argument that I've heard in this boardroom, is that 12 years ago, we should have looked at this and said, hey, we need to start incrementally planning, and instead, we didn't. And now we're trying to play catch-up. And the problem is, is this whole interoperability, which is what the state of Iowa is working for, started in 2002, is when that word was first used, after 9/11. That's when this blew up, that's when Iowa started to plan. How can we talk with other agencies, not only within Iowa, but now how can we interop if we have to send people to Washington DC, or to New York City, or to wherever? How can we send our responders with equipment, because they're not gonna have enough? You can use our radios on their equipment. It's a, I can take my laptop, plug it into a radio, and program it to work in DC on a homeland, on a federal homeland security talk group. So our responders can go in and out, that's what the whole system was designed to do. They did not figure out that in order to pay for that, there has to be incremental increases. And so now, when you tell people they're gonna receive a 25% increase in a bill that they get, everybody loses their mind. But 25% of a dollar is pretty cheap for the technology that exists to make sure the system works.
Okay, so.
I'll leave a letter with you, I only have one copy. When you read it, understand I was writing it in an emotional state. So you may need to tweak some things. I've been harsh with some legislators in Iowa about their actions, but, I mean, I also received good feedback from Representative Watkins. We disagree, that happens, but I think positive change may come in the end, because it seems like everybody except the Department of Homeland Security is opposed to this. So, I mean, the Iowa Association of County, or county was, ISAC.
Yeah, ISAC was there.
They came out against it.
Yeah, yeah, there were some pretty heavyweights there at that press conference, so hopefully the governor will look at that.
So. But do anybody have any questions about 911, 911 funding, or how we operate, or what we expend our monies on? Feel free to let me know.
Okay, thanks, Tony.
Thanks for your support.
Thank you.
Public input, anybody have anything to discuss that is not on the agenda? One line? Okay, all right, we'll move on. Seven, consider approval of a resolution appointing the County Compensation Commission for eminent domain for 2025. And what this is, is it is a commission that decides when, and the domain is invoked on somebody, they decide what compensation the landowners should get.
And this is an ongoing, every year?
We do this every year.
Not a special thing just popped up because?
No, because there's gonna be something happening now. Most, I mean, there's no meetings, when I did it, when I was out of there, I just told them, there's no meetings, you'll probably never be called. It's the easiest commission you could ever serve on, so.
Until it's not.
Until it's not.
Always qualify.
Well, I qualified it when I called them.
I move to approve the resolution appointing the County Compensation Commission for eminent domain 2025.
I'll second that.
Okay, the resolution? Now, Isla?
Aye.
Si?
Aye.
Wondra?
Aye.
Holmes?
Aye.
Crazy?
Aye.
I would like to say thank you to all, anybody who served on any board, not just this board, but any board, when you're willing to step forward and do that, that's just, because again, it is, you're putting yourself out there, and if the board does get stood up, then you're really putting yourself out.
Okay. All right. Number eight, consider approval of change request for backup generation, generation system at the new health department. E. M. S. Building.
I move to approve the change request.
How much was it?
23,482.
Okay, what are they doing?
I'll second that, so we got that out of the way.
They're putting in a generator.
So.
They didn't have one in the plans?
They did, but then it got taken out, it was gonna shift around, and then.
Hey, Mark. It's a big one, now it's a little one.
They pulled it? Why?
Generator.
So it was originally pulled, I believe, in the COF study measures, and it's one of those things that got cut that you really can't cut.
Exactly.
You've gotta have backup generation for the, at a minimum, for the backup lighting, emergency exits, the refrigeration and storage of some key drugs and things like that, that are at the, that are gonna be at the facility. So the, the reason that we're, just so everybody knows too, we have applied for a grant as well to cover the costs of this generator. This generator is not the original generator. The original generator was over $100,000, which is one of the reasons it got cut. And it was designed to run the entire facility standalone. And so when we looked at it, that was probably, that's probably, that was one of the reasons it got cut. That, in my opinion, that is probably overdoing it. But there are some key things about the building that have to run 24/7, no matter what, and that would be the refrigeration, emergency doors, emergency lighting, and things like that, this generator does that, until, until we. And medications.
Medications.
Yeah. And so the keynote is, we don't have that funding approved yet through the grant, but we have applied for a grant that will cover this expenditure.
Okay.
Where's that grant coming from?
FEMA. FEMA?
FEMA.
So it'll take a while. It's usually, well, I think that actually, it was just in case I'm able to, in December, if the funding would be available. September, October, but the application's been in for about three months.
Yeah, the motion second. Okay. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number nine, discussion to appeal decision of City Development Board to go to the District Court for city annexation of a portion of 302nd and 303rd Avenue.
I'd make the motion that we do appeal the decision of the board. The decision of the board was basically to deny the annexation to the center of the road, even though the, basically, the code says they must, so I would make the motion to reappeal it.
I'll second that.
Oh, go ahead, Chuck.
Any discussion?
I, yeah, I'm not aware that we had, that there was more communication in this process.
I wasn't either, I wasn't aware.
Okay, so, well, and Ben, if I, if I missed any of the stuff, any points, let me know. Got a lot of people that are watching. The bottom line, if we put it into layman's terms, because I love layman's terms, because I'm not always, I'm not that guy, I like simple. And so the bottom line is this, when the city annexed some ground in the area.
Many years ago.
Many years ago, towards the 302nd Avenue and 303rd Avenue, it only went to the property boundary line, not necessarily to the center of the road. This is not unique necessarily, there are other places, but in this place, we asked that board to say, hey, follow the law. The law says that when you annex a portion, when a city annexes a portion, they must take, the word used is must.
And did we first ask the city to do what seemed right?
We've asked, but.
So then we went to the city development board.
Then we went to the city development board.
You actually, by the code, you're required to notify them. It's not just if you request, it's if you are aware of the situation, you shall notify the city development board.
Yeah, so. And, and I really believe the reason for the. Uh, if I was a city and I was sitting on a city board, I, I wouldn't necessarily annex to the middle of the road either, if I could get away with not doing that. I would annex to the property line and then let somebody else take care of the road. But the code is very specific. It says must, must go to the center. So we asked this board, we didn't ask, we notified this board. They were supposed to read the law and the word must. There was a lot of discussion that day. They would like us, uh, to, I guess, work with the city to decide if they're going to annex to the center of the road.
What was their reasoning for, if, if the code is obvious, what was their reasoning for denying it? I mean, we got to counter their reasoning, what would that?
So their, their reasoning was is they don't, they don't want to have to make the decision. They would like the city and the county to get along together and to choose to follow the law, the code, I guess. Uh, now there's a separate issue, and the separate issue, and I, I like to split these two, and, and we're, we're trying to co-mingle them. I think, to me, that's not, that's not right. Because again, in this case, specifically with these roads, you would have the city owning half the road and you'd have the county owning half the road. Right now, the county owns the entire road. But by code, by law, we should not, nor should we at any point that we touch the city. The city should own to the center, we should own to the center. And then after ownership is determined, then we should sit down and in good faith, work with the city to come up with who's maintaining it. Because it doesn't make sense for the city to go plow half the road and the county necessarily plow the other half the road, or the ma, the maintenance agreements. For instance, the city is able to use, uh, other techniques, maintenance techniques that we, we can't use or we don't use at a county level. So in certain situations, it makes more sense for the city to do it than it does for the county to do it. And in other situations, it would make much more sense, hey, we, we'll go ahead, we should go ahead and, and do it because it makes more sense for us to do it. But this issue, this specific issue, in my opinion, we need to determine ownership. We need to get that right first.
So the city development board chose not to rule?
They denied it.
But they said that we could come, but they said that we could come back if we couldn't get along with following the law, apparently. I, I don't really underst- understand it because the code is very specific. It says must. And if I was a city, any city, not Fort Madison, not, not Des Moines, not, whatever city, if I was annexing and I had the right and the ability and this board was not going to do its job and was going to allow me to not own something that potentially was going to cost me money, I would never annex to the center of the road.
So the city has, the city has said they, they don't want to or they're not responding or what's, what's the city's position?
Well, we, uh, ceased negotiations with the city. This has to do with 302nd Avenue, uh, 303rd Avenue, uh, and stems from the installation of the trail, although ownership is a, a primary issue and a separate and distinct issue. Uh, so we were in negotiations, uh, with the city, uh, I think, to have them take over uh, maintenance responsibility of the trail, which is currently, uh, or excuse me, of that street, which is currently located in our right-of-way. Um, on October 1st, those negotiations ceased, uh, after the, uh, the mayor of the city completely blew up a good faith negotiation, uh, that occurred between, uh, myself, uh, Ben Hall, uh, city manager, uh, Ms. Laura Legas, Legis?
Very good, yes.
Legis, uh, Mark Bustlot. And, uh, we were led to believe, and I think, uh, former supervisor Schultz was involved in that as well, uh, and we were led to believe that the, uh, the mayor was, in fact, at the time supportive of this arrangement we had come up with, which was to resolve the maintenance issue. The ownership issue still would have been outstanding. Um, and we came to the brink of a lawsuit, uh, filing a lawsuit with the city, which we never did because nobody really wins in that, as far as the taxpayers go. So what we did is we took, uh, this to the city development board, uh, and again, per code, as, uh, supervisor, uh, Si pointed out, um, the code states shall. So the board, uh, city development board, uh, by all means should have at that point certified, uh, the information provided to them was correct and, uh, declared those portions to the center of the roadway of those, uh, two roadways annexed to the city. They didn't. Um, the city put forth, uh, an argument, um, that there were ongoing negotiations, which in my fault and nothing personal against, uh, Laura, uh, or anybody else in the city, but in my perspective, there hadn't been any communications on this since October, um, when that, uh, proposal was completely blown out of the water after months of, uh, I think, strenuous and intense negotiations. So I think to put that to the city development board, uh, nobody could say in good faith that negotiations were ongoing, and I think that's just, uh, an outright, uh, false statement presented to that board. Um, but in any event, that is not the, the legal issue where I think the appeal lies. The appeal lies in the fact that the language is shall, and the board, uh, based on the advice of their attorney and assistant AG, uh, determined that, that shall doesn't mean shall. Um, they read the, the next line, uh, which was legislative intent, um, that was included in that code section that states this, uh, section is not intended to interfere with, uh, any ongoing negotiations between jurisdictions. You know, that's all lovely, great, fine, whatever. It doesn't mean anything as it pertains to that line before shall. So that's, that's where they got it wrong. And, and I do think, uh, before, uh, being able to move forward with a comprehensive, uh, maintenance agreement to cover all roadways, I do think ownership needs to be established. Um, and we haven't discussed this with the city since that hearing. I do still think the appeal, uh, should go forward unless the city says today, yeah, you know what, I agree, the board got it wrong, we acknowledge we should take over, uh, uh, ownership of those roadways. But absent that, I do think that appeal, uh, should and needs to go through because the board got the law wrong, uh, in my opinion. But I, as to Gary's point, uh, I do think prior to, uh, engaging in any, uh, overhaul of road maintenance agreements, uh, to be all encompassing, which we all agree needs to be done for the benefit of both the city and county, uh, all of our taxpayers, but we need to establish who has what responsibilities as to what road, and that's only going to be determined by ownership.
Uh, Ross, instead of the payment to the court, couldn't we, uh, file an appeal back with the city board and, and letting them then know that there have been, um, negotiations ongoing since last October?
I appreciate that, Chuck, and that's a, a good question. Uh, that being said, we, I, I think I was fairly clear at the hearing, um, that there were no ongoing negotiations and that requires two parties to be sitting at the table and not just a mere allegation that there are ongoing negotiations.
Yet they went forward, forward without excuse to deny the request.
They used it as an excuse and, uh, I think essentially by denying it, they think that they can force, uh, further negotiations, which will need to occur as it pertains to maintenance, notwithstanding their decision. Um, but the bottom line is their decision is wrong, I think. And, and yeah, district court, uh, an appeal to the district court is the, the next step. That's the, uh, the statutory remedy if, if we believe the city development board got something wrong.
I think that's important too for the city development board as a learning and a growth experience for them and possibly their attorney, which seemed to argue both sides of it and then turned right back around and counseled them in a way that puts us where we're at, where we're here today.
He essentially said we met every single requirement leading up to the, uh, city shall or the development board shall, uh, consider that annexed. Uh, said we fit every single criteria necessary and then was like, but we're not going to do it anyway because we don't want to interfere with negotiations because I don't know how he perceived the legislature as qualifying that as an out by saying, you know, this is not intended to interfere with negotiations. That's just a, a separate, distinct statement from the shall, but it doesn't qualify or change the shall.
Do we have a motion to have on this?
We have a motion second.
We do.
Yep, Si, Holmes. Yeah, Laura.
May I speak? Thank you, uh, board supervisors, and thank you, Ross, for your explanation. And yes, uh, we did all visit with the city development board. Um, people ask, what does that board do? Well, obviously, they take when we have these issues come up. Um, now, I will say, um, as city manager, yeah, for the city of Fort Madison, I did have a previous conversation after October 2nd. October was the day that the council decided to not move forward with the 2080 agreement that was put in place numerous years ago, and we worked to amend that, and, um, my staff along with your staff did do that. Um, I think the issue that we had, and it's in the minutes, um, that we did provide to the city development board is that we have other roadways of concern, and I think there's a, the maintenance agreement is a separate issue. We have, as a city, we have no problem with annexation of levels that need to be annexed in. That's not the problem then, but in the mean, and I'm like, is that my phone? No, thank goodness, because I always silence my phone. Like, oh, no, did I not? Anyway, pardon me on that. Um, with that, though, we have strong concerns over the continuous issues of maintenance. What does maintenance mean? Does it mean we fix everything in the road from beyond the little pothole and snow removal and mowing of the right-of-way? Or does it mean we're going to reseal coat a road, re-concrete? What does that mean? And I think we all had very mixed conversations from the county to the city level. I do think though, and, and there was a letter sent out yesterday morning, which you should have all been copied on, from Aylars and Cooney, who's representing the city, our attorney, that we have gotten to represent us in this, about all the different roadways that are in the original 2080 agreement, um, items that are roadways that are in the county, but we provide mowing and snow removal outside of our corporate line agreement, and that there are, um, corporate line agreements, but the corporate line is not the center of the road. There's lots of things. It's not just 302nd. From a city standpoint, we feel that 302nd is a jab regarding the trail. This wonderful trail to rodeo park that we all should be very proud of, and I think that's been the key, some, a lot of key issues along the line, and that's where we're coming from, we feel. And so at this point, I mean, you're going to make your decision, whatever you want to make, but we really need city and county to sit down and I, maybe just get rid of what this agreement was and really think about, can we look at a snow removal, mowing agreement? Because again, I agree, it makes no sense for your plow to drop a plow on a road that we're going by. That's a waste of all taxpayers' money and resources. Um, I don't think our staff by any means, um, um, Mark Bustlot is not here today. Um, he's, he's actually out of town, and I know that him and I had a very end of discussion about this over the weekend, and it's more of a, could we create, when we get past this and figure out, we really need to figure out a lot of different things in this letter sent out, but maybe a maintenance agreement is snow removal, mowing, because there are things that I know we have repaired on areas probably of the counties and vice versa. So I really ask that our staffs could work together, and I think that was what the outcome of the council wanted. Um, there is a board supervisor that I had conversations with that's no longer at your table, and that's probably where it's dropped off in the middle of, you know, and so that's where we're at, but we do ask that you seriously take that piece into it for a maintenance agreement.
So, Laura, I was just, just so that we're, we're clear, prior to the mayor at the coun, the council meeting, uh, making the famous statement that he made concerning the subject, uh, we did have an agreement, it hadn't gone to the city council yet, and the county actually resurfaced that road, did they or did they not?
Yeah, they resurfaced it.
They did. So we spent a lot of money because of the good faith, uh, belief and agreement that we had in the agreement to make sure that road was well, had its highest maintenance level as we could. And while I agree that the, the, the portrait, the trail is awesome, it's fantastic, but it also created some issues that the city recognizes. We've been out there talking, that's part of the agreement. It caused a lot of drainage issues and things like that that are causing some issues, uh, with that roadway, specifically on that section of the road that then would, if annexed, would be the city's responsibility. So it appears to me that the city is trying to not take that because of a problem it created with the trail that was there. But with that being said, it would be up to the city then to deal with that drainage issue, but the roadway, we've resurfaced, we did have an agreement, and I, and so while we do say that this may be the vehicle that we're looking at the comprehensive plan on, and, and I totally agree with that, and I, and I think we should have a comprehensive plan. I do think that we should work together in doing that, but I also think that we should all make sure, again, as, as our, you know, as Ross stated, is we need to make sure that ownership is, is poured out.
I don't want to go into great detail and, and point out drainage issues of, of culverts that were 90% full until after they were cleaned out, uh, on the other side of the road and the culverts that were taken out. Again, I wasn't here in the development of this. I don't want to say that's my scapegoat, but it is. I was not here, um, with this project, and I, I was trying my due har, doing my hardest, due diligence of trying to resolve a problem. And I think we need to come to the table and get this figured out, um, on that. But again, I think a snow removal, mowing, maintenance agreement is, on our end, I think a much better situation for us, and also to figure out what roads do we and the county need to figure out. There's more than just 302nd, and that's our biggest stance on that, so thank you.
Laura?
Yes.
Do you think that coming up with a maintenance agreement would settle the issue of the city not owning, uh, the property, its property up to the center line of the roadway?
I don't think we're opposed of that we should annex into the center of the roadways. It's just not 302nd. There's other ones that were shared.
Well, we can work on the other ones as we go.
Yes, and I, I think that those, but I, I think it's been a very much, um, and I don't, you know, again, I wasn't here through the construction, I wasn't through part of that, but I think it's just been a lot of heartache between the city and the county on this whole project.
Well, also, I think.
Yes.
You guys worked really hard on this before to all get it agreed out, and then the mayor came and teed it all up. So who's to say you don't sit down and work on it this evening again, and the mayor's not going to sit down and blow it up again? I mean, history has shown that he's done that on a couple of different spots. Who's to say he's not going to do this again? I mean, do almost, I have to do the legal issue first so we have clear standing, so there's no, why, he can blow it up and change mine again.
Sure.
I agree.
And, and I don't speak on behalf of the mayor. I don't, and, 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 you know, I, I work for the mayor and I work for the council and I work for the city and our residents. And, um, you know, I think the mayor had some heartbreak on how it all evolved to how it did, and so what happened that evening, I can't explain, except for we did our due diligence with your staff to come up with the best plan we could come up with.
That's 100% true.
Um, to, to make that, um, amendment to that current, to that current agreement. I think our biggest stance as a city, and I think the mayor would agree with this, I could be wrong, but I think he would, that, um, we do have other roadways that do need to fit into this, and maybe it's a, let's sit down and talk about all these on this list and what should we put in and do once, full swoop of taking care of all the roadways and then go to an agreement, with a maintenance agreement.
So there are other roadways that haven't been?
Yes, Laura, this was sent out, um, in the Aylars and Cooney.
Yeah, I think, did you get that? Did you receive that?
Yes.
I want to.
Yes, Ben, sorry.
I'm afraid of losing you. So I want to, uh, thank Tim for what you brought, because that's a concern of mine is, I don't know for sure, but mediation is not mine, I don't know where that is. We've already shown that contracts don't appear to be binding. Um, and so what we are saying, one side of, but leaving out is none of those other roads in the county are subject to the trail agreement, which we have specific problems with under that contract. Had the board not chosen what they did, the county would not have a standing to bring a lawsuit over that today.
The city development board, you want to clarify that sort of?
Yes, thank you, thank you. The city development board, had that road had been annexed as the, the code said they shall have done.
In other words, yeah, had that, I'm sorry, uh, in other words, yeah, had that road been annexed like we asked it to be, uh, the county would not have standing because the city's trail would no longer be in the county's right-of-way, that would be the city's right-of-way.
Right.
So that would render that issue.
This is really, uh, after the voluntary agreement, felt through a really an attempt to bring the temperature down, so that's how we feel about it, for sure. So with the list that's been provided, I acknowledge that it's there and that there are multiple roads around the city, um, county boundaries that are difficult to figure out. Well, we've discussed that for a while. When we voluntarily agreed, we would all sit down and redo this agreement. That was a part of the agreement.
You had a two-year plan.
Yes.
We were making two years.
A two-year stipulation that the city put in. A two-year stipulation that the city put in.
Yes, it was.
I didn't agree with particularly, I just thought it was superfluous, it was already out in the contract.
Well, but thank you, Ben, now, for working with me on that, because I feel this agreement is not adequate.
So we put that in there, and then, so it's already been discussed and memorialized here, how that agreement ended. So with that, the list of roads, I think there are problems with the list provided, but that's kind of, and it's not easy, and I thought we wound up settling on two years. I expressed concern that two years might be a timeline, because it takes a lot of research to figure out certain things, annexation proceedings, in some cases, roads were formerly belonging to the DOT, and we know the obvious example like this is 61, but there are other county roads around town that were formerly DOT and were subject to transfers. And in those cases, I believe, I mean, this is a part of what all the due process that needs to take place, those transfer agreements will probably supersede the 368, chapter 368 law that we've been referencing, so I don't, I mean, it needs to happen either particularly in the agreement. That would not be beneficial to the citizens of either of our constituencies. We need to keep the citizens' welfare in primary concern and move together to not have anything rash happen. So, but that's my concern with mediation, if it not be binding, you know, we're kind of doing same stuff over and over again. I think what does maintenance mean, I think we have a fair establishment of, okay, so certainly not everything is in written as well as it could be in the existing agreement. There are some, some holes in there. I think the way we've treated it since Mark and I have been the ones in positions working this out is established, there is a precedence there. And I don't, I, it really doesn't matter because what's right is right. The ideas we put together in agreement, that would be equitable. I do not feel like the current situation favors the city, not even a little. Should I be wrong with it, I'd be fine too, if that's the way it is, because what's right is right, but we are yearly working on city roads beyond the snowplowing line, so. But again, if, if, if we wanted to be equitable, I mean, I think everybody would say equitable should be the goal, right?
Yes.
It would seem to me that the necessary first step is understanding who owns which roads. So if we're going to have a ledger, you know, and try to work these things out, we'll have to include our maintenance personnel, because lines on a map are not necessarily going to be a great place to turn a snowplow around. You know, if they're on hill, no driveway or no access or anything like that, you know, so we need to be careful and include our maintenance personnel in making good common sense choices about this, but, you know, in the end, we would seek something that's as equitable as it can be in terms of we take care of this many miles for the city and then for the county, it would seem to me first step to create good ones. I think those are my main points.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have a motion in a second. Call in favor.
Aye.
Post. Motion here's. Number 10, personnel actions. We have two step increases for secondary roads, step increase for the health department and a salary increase for the auditor's office.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Motion in a second, any discussion? Call in favor.
Aye.
And post. Eleven, commissioner committee reports. Ginger, you want to start?
Oh, yeah. Um, let's see. I've got pay action board this afternoon, Gary and I will be on the radio tomorrow morning. This past week, we had another meetings on the new building and updates on progress on that. I think things are moving along fine, Gary will probably do a better job of capping that off than I, but we'll keep those going every other Thursday to stay on top of that. And then Denise and I met with Ross and his staff and Ryan and started really hashing out all those differences of the things that over many years Ryan had absorbed under her umbrella that need to be moved over to Ross's office and/or our maintenance department and et cetera. So I think we're moving along really nicely on that. One of the key issues there is that we need, this board needs to name a general relief director every year, and that was Ryan's position was general relief director, so we do need to post for that job. And primarily, though, that would be, there would be three guardianships involved and then overseeing the payee services for general relief, we've got 107 payees currently or beneficiaries of that. So we've got that worked on, the court administration piece, Ross did clarify for us that it was not a conflict for them to be coding both sides of those bills, so that was one of our big questions. And then continuing to work on our options for the various properties, so.
That's all I got.
All right, so last week I did a tour with Mark of buildings in Willmerson that we've got. Here we did Lee County, Lee County courthouse, kind of saltage over there, the attorney's office, and then we went out to the new building and kind of went through that new building, what we're seeing out there, how that's going to work in progress, and so it's very good to see, especially like the courthouses, as we start talking about possibly moving things, hearing things, how that all situates out. I don't know what it is. So toured that, and then on Thursday we had super board meeting, we kind of, I'm a group which has a very old, a bunch of more details, since I'm the second, he's the primary on that one, so let him be the primary. See if I can just throw it out to you there. And then on Friday I had landfill commission meeting with that one, and basically it's, one major thing to talk about was the contract for Kegka for transportation down there up to get approved there. They've kind of, all of a sudden, the natural gas, the P and D is going to come in there as cut off communications and not talking to them and about three other landfills that we're working with, so they don't know what's happened, but ultimately it's, was moving full steam, but everyone's going along and they said everyone, you know, it skipped out supposed to come in, but I had pictures of it, it's in the US, it's supposed to be heading this way, and then all of a sudden now it's nothing, so they're not sure what's happening with that. And then also they got, handed that solid wage sanitary landfill, local government guarantee, financial test, and CFO letter that we have to approve, will be on our next meeting that you guys will have their copies of. And that was it for last week.
Okay, so a week ago today, the Lee County Conservation Board met. As I mentioned a few weeks ago, the conservation bought two new paddle boats, paid $11,000 for these two boats. They're very nice boats, I've looked at them, they're larger boats, aluminum boats, lighter boats, they have a canopy. So the board decided to rent these boats for $10 for a stretch of every 30-minute period. And Lee County is going to continue to have the existing fiberglass boats in service also. I believe all four boats are going to be at Fullmeller Park late.
Yep.
And these boats are a little heavier and don't have a canopy, so these boats will be rented at what they had been rented at, $5 for a 30-minute stretch.
And we've been following this island project for several years now, and we now have information that the foreman engineers has this feasibility study that has been conducting is being canceled for now, as there's no further.
So the feasibility study is done. So it's done, and so now it's a matter of finding if there's any interested partners to go ahead.
Yeah.
So that's, the feasibility study has been completed at their cost, so no cost to Lee County, taxpayers, anything like that. Now we're at the position to like either take action or no.
We're waiting for funding.
So we're having conversations in the background with those kind of things, but we do have a deadline that if we don't have anything by the fall, we're just going to, you know, wrap it up, put it on the shelf, and then if something comes out of the woodwork in the future, then we can pull it back, update that plan.
These studies will always remain available for future use.
Yep.
And speaking of funding, the AmeriCorps team that I had mentioned was coming to the One County and Lee County. Well, guess what? The Doach funding cuts have affected this program, so these people have been sent home and there will be no AmeriCorps team coming to Lee County nor One County.
Just heartbreaking, for the organization that, not just Lee County, but national.
In this case, yeah, all across.
Very sad.
And Climax, as it does every summer, sponsoring a summer intern, and so this summer intern will begin June 2nd. Her area of interest will be muscles.
Muscles.
Muscles, muscles.
So we do, we do a muscles program with every seventh grader, and well, not everybody, we're working to get to that, but what we're looking at is adding a rotation to the already existing field trip that we seven grader should be on. So Climax staff come out for the day, we get them in Waiters, we get them in the Mississippi, they're doing muscles, water quality research, all these fun things, but we're adding another level to that rotation to give them a little more, so that's what the external is working on.
Okay, and I've also mentioned that the conservation center is putting down new flooring, so last Thursday it closed the center and started moving exhibits and furniture to one side in preparation to get the floor prepared for the, for the electric vinyl tile. Floor Crafters is doing installation.
Full camp.
Full camp.
Full camp.
No, I'm sorry, okay, Full Camp is doing installation, and they are expecting to have this job done in seven to 10 days or so.
Yep.
And.
It's crazy out there right now, it looks like a tornado.
Yeah. And Heather mentioned that the tricky night is coming up, it's June 13th. She said that traditionally this is one of, been one of the better fundraises for Lee County Conservation, so to get out there and support that again.
Challenge us, put together a team.
Yeah.
Is it conservation questions?
No. No, but I don't, I don't get to know the question that Matt's on yet.
Okay, and then they always tell us about the camping nights, they keep tabs on that, so last month, the numbers were up again. In April, there were 241 camping nights and 44 cabin rentals, and the environmental educators have made many field trips, I think they kind of developed 21 of them last month. And then last Thursday, Jennifer McMillan with IG HCP had three different meetings with county employees to help them with their questions during open enrollment. She said that one of the most recurring concerns is the deductible that occurs with the Wellmark Blue Cross Blue Shield Plan, which is $5,000, $10,000 traditional and $6,350 and $7,000, $12,700 for the HSA. But she reassures them that that is not your deductible, that apparently they don't know about the partial buydown, but she explains that to them, that Lee County has the partial buydown, so that actually each employee in the traditional plan as an individual, the deductible is only $1,000, and the family it's $2,000, and with the HSA it's $3,000 and $6,000. And she did spend a few minutes kind of encouraging more employees to consider switching to the HSA plan. She's letting you know, if you look at it, this really could be quite a benefit for yourselves and your families, considering that Lee County makes a $100 contribution per month to an individual and $200 a month to a family, which over a number of years can add up to quite a sizable amount in your one HSA account.
Just make sure that on your card that you have an EBS sticker, so.
Yes.
Yeah, that's big.
That way the. They'll know that they don't need to be concerned about it.
That's your partial cell phone.
$5,000, $10,000 would be done. They will know that.
I'll have them. She's going to be sending me a whole bunch of stickers, so if anybody doesn't have a sticker, because a couple guys at secondary roads, theirs are all scratched out, so she's sending me a whole bunch of new EBS stickers, so everybody should be getting those here. Do you have a little sticker?
I need my sticker.
Ooh. Somebody else said here for a while. No, it's the same, it's the same number and stuff, right, it's just that, yeah, you need the little EBS, so when you give them your card, then they know that it's a buydown and they need to contact secondary as an EBS on there, so.
And I'd just like to throw in one more note for Jennifer McMillan and IG HCP, they are really doing all they can to help out Lee County, help out Lee County employees, answer the questions and take care of any concerns they have. I thought they were very impressed that I'm glad that we moved to go ahead with this week a year, a year ago. And just one more, see this Thursday, there is a Mississippi Valley CEO meeting. That's it.
Okay, so the last Wednesday, and, so, the County Economic Development meeting, we had last Thursday, Thursday, in the morning, and I really don't have a whole lot to add other than it was a good meeting, lots of talk, again, talked about our super board meeting that we had, that's going to continue, talked about just a lot of the, they've got going projects they've got going on, discussions had on the new, the prayer advantage center going to SEC and then the new path forward, possibly with the building out there. Plan or request for funding is going to go through and hopefully we'll be able to seize that.
Now, will they be there before this school year's?
It'll be 18, it'll be, so they talked about that a little bit, it's, even with the, the request for funding, you're looking at 18 months before the funds become available, very similar to what we, what we're seeing with the health department. We were, presented those funds in 2024. Yeah, and so we're just now getting to the point where hopefully we're going to start receiving some of those funds in 25, so there's an 18-month to two years. Once you get awarded those funds, they're there, but it's just, it takes a while to be able to get them, and they're always last money in, so.
Now, assuming that funding doesn't come through, will that space just stay sitting there empty then?
Well, no, because right now they're still using it, utilizing it for the CEO program, a variety of different projects and things that are going on. The CAC itself will not necessarily be meeting out there, but they do have several rental agreements with other entities that also help free the cost of the building that's out there, and the Port Authority is the one that actually owns the building.
When I think, I've had a couple daycare providers reach out to me and ask about, okay, they heard about this and they're like, okay, are we out of business now? And I said, no, it'll be at least 27 to 28 before they would actually come online and be functioning, so don't panic, you still got to do.
What then what?
Right, and so.
Will that affect them?
Would that be a problem then?
Okay, so here's what I've got, and, and we're just getting, we're just getting into, we're just touching the very beginning of this thing, right? And so there was a, basically a nine-day turnaround to be able to put in for this grant, if you will, or this money at the federal level. And so we're able to get all the partners together and everybody together, and everybody says, hey, this is a great idea, this is what we're looking at doing. This affects newborns to three-years-old. That's, that's, that's the core group, and it's three-year preschool, which is what the state, correct me if I'm wrong anywhere in here. Ginger's on, I can see her looking at it. And stop me if I go, if I go too far, but it, it deals primarily with three-year-olds and getting them into three-year-old preschool, which is odd, we all know that's the age where.
That's the beginning aim of the project, because currently any state funding for preschool is four-year-olds only.
Yeah, and as we know, three and four-year-olds, they're like sponges, they're picking up everything. That's, that's where we, that's where we make our, some of our biggest gains in learning, speech, the whole, everything, that's where, that's where it happens. And so that's, that's the focus of the state, we're hoping to be able to use some state dollars, federal dollars, and be able to create this, this three-year-old preschool with the three school, main school systems involved in that, centrally Kegka, Port Madison, are all in board to do that. With that being said, we also want to have a provider out there for newborns, which is the zero to three-year-old category. And what we're hoping for, and we're going to want feedback, we do want feedback from all of the daycare providers out there, but what we've seen in that industry, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, because I've not been in it, although I've been studying it for the last five years and had a sister that was very involved in it. From a business standpoint, zero to three-year-olds, zero to two, they are, they are not money makers.
That's the most. That's the most expensive there to provide. Most stringent ratio and yes.
And so our, our thought process was that if we were able to, through utilizing, utilization of that space, be able to take some of that, and there is a disparity in, there's, almost every center has a waiting list for newborns. And so if we were to be able to, A, meet that need, take some of that weight off of them providing that, that would give them the ability to focus their efforts on what does provide them with, with, with some funds. And so that's kind of the overall thought, thought process.
It's also important to note that there is no shortage of children needing care. We have a, a very large percentage of children currently in unregulated care. And the majority of those parents, when we did the childcare market study a few years ago, the majority of parents stated that their preferred setting for their childcare is a center, and they were not currently in their preferred setting. So there's plenty of need.
Well, how many slots were there that we didn't have?
About 1,200.
12, so again, we'd be just scratching the surface of what, of what we're talking, of what we're talking about here.
And there could be an adjustment fee, no doubt. But, but long-term, this should not impact our current providers. And we are, as Gary said, this is a, you know, very long-term future project. And it is our intent to have many planning sessions with current providers and really work on how we can support the current structure that we have so that this new effort fits in and works well and does not impact them. So, yeah, absolutely.
We, we definitely do not want to hurt any providers who are here. We need to keep everybody we've got and hopefully have them expand. I'm also part of another group, if you will, Friends of Lee County Childcare, and we are actually reaching out to 10 of the most populated, I guess, centers in the county and discussing with them individually too, on how we can help as part of that group.
Gary, you mentioned that the newborns, the three-year-olds are the most expensive and that these local childcare providers would probably be more than willing to give them up to have the three-year-olds and up, older youngsters. But last week, I asked about the problem with transportation, and you said, well, the three-year-olds, I guess they will be transported by the school districts. But are they gonna transport the newborns too?
I want to keep.
On the bus? And will be parents willing, will parents be willing to drive their newborn 10, 15 miles every, twice a day back and forth?
They will.
They will be.
For full daycare, they absolutely will. Yes.
Yeah, and not, not only that, but I think the, the other focus is here, I want everybody to understand, this is, this is not gonna be like a center for the entire population of Lee County's
Absolutely not.
newborns. It, it can't be. It's only, it's like, yeah, it just, it just can't be, one. Number two, that corridor, 61, was identified with 1,500, 1,500, 700 workers just along the 61 corridor. Not, we're not even looking up into northern or extreme southern Lee County, but just the corridor and the factories that are out there. You know, not to say that somebody could drive down there if a slot opened. But I, again, I, I do not think that we're gonna have to worry about unbalancing any, any daycare or any providers. There's an overwhelming need that's out there. I mean, our, our studies have all shown that throughout. That was one of the things that Empowering Families that we, that we did here with that grant in the last four years, was able to get that study out there, which is also helping us drive the grants and things like that that we're able to get now to help take advantage of, getting that funding in to help address those situations.
Are they looking at extending hours now?
We're, we are just in the very, we are just starting.
Yeah, with different shifts have the problem.
Yeah, it's, it's just, it's an idea. I think what was put out was, was it 6, 5:00 or 6:00 AM to like 5:00 or 6:00 AM or PM or something like that? It was gonna be that, I think that, but don't quote me on that. Again, it's all very preliminary.
Very preliminary.
Yeah, yep, so, okay, so that was economic development. Let's go to the Lee County EMS meeting that we had at 1 o'clock. And really, and not a whole lot more to put out there. This was the first meeting where we kind of got everybody together, which I like to see that. We're gonna start meeting, I believe Ginger and I are gonna start attending those meetings. So rather than having our own separate meeting, we're gonna jump in with the, basically Carly Nelson, their subs, along with the financial aspect, and Ginger and I, as much as possible.
It became apparent that there were several entities involved in the project that had a requirement of regular meetings.
Yep.
And so it just makes sense that we would just all meet at the same time.
Rather than creating a meeting, have a meeting that makes sense. We're all saying the same thing over and over again, so, yeah. But just as a refresher, and Mark can correct me here, basically the framing is complete for all practical purposes. Wiring's still going on. We do have a problem right now with the plumbing a little bit because they're on strike, but it's not, it's not, yeah, I believe they are. I haven't seen.
That they are?
Yeah.
I've spoken with a few people late last week, and they've all said we need to.
So this could have an impact potentially on our, right now, we're good. But I hope they resolve that fairly quickly. Wiring, 95% interior, they're installing drywall, exterior siding, compaction testing. I believe they did that last week. To get that done, so hopefully they're gonna be starting concrete soon. We're still having some ongoing talks as far as the cubicles go. Generator, we discussed today. I just look at Ginger's face. Which is, that's just another, so that's another one of those things, and we'll bring it up here, and I'm sure we'll discuss it in the, in the future. But that was another one of those things that was gonna be a change, because again, when we were looking at cost savings, and we said, hey, we can take our furniture that we've got in our buildings and move in. So we looked at furniture, the furniture stuff that was in that bill originally, when it was gonna be like seven, almost eight billion. Yeah, furniture, pictures, and equipment. So we looked at it, and we said, hey, we don't need to have, that was the way we were able to cut down, to get from our $7 million down, down to our $5.5, $6 million, where we thought we were gonna be. So, but when it cut it out, it cut out the cubicles, because somehow cubicles are furniture, which I don't really understand, how that, because that, that got missed, kind of like the generator. So we're working on that. There is some money, $130,000?
$140,000.
$140,000? That's even better. That's good. That's even $10,000. So $140,000 that is in the budget, but we've got to, we've got to find it. So it's, in other words, it wasn't actually said, this is what you're gonna buy, this is what you're gonna install, by the architect. The architect said, hey, you guys figure it out and tell us what you're putting in there. You got $140,000. And what we're finding out is $140,000 may not be enough.
Yeah, the initial estimate, or the first, first blush, blush look at the cubicles from one supplier was, just for the panels alone, not including the privacy extensions needed for HIPAA and et cetera, it's between $78 and $123,000. Needless to say, we're shocked.
Yeah, so we're looking, those are some of the discussions that are ongoing. Mark's heavily involved in that as well. And so I think that's probably enough on that one. What's my next one? I think that was it for last week. This coming week, Ginger already announced, 93 now. Once a month, we're hit radio show down there in Keyakuck. So tune in tomorrow at 8 o'clock, see what we're gonna say. We don't even know what we're saying. Don't be surprised to everybody, including ourselves. Noon, I've got a VA meeting, and then at 1:30, I've got a Zoom. I think we're gonna talk about 320th Street a little bit tomorrow and kind of go down that road. I think maybe I'll just leave that for there right now. I've also got a Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission meeting at noon on Thursday. Just for anybody that's missed it, we do not have a property tax bill. So even though they were able to somehow throw together a passage of, apparently this SF 659 to 911 out of nowhere, they were not able to pass a tax bill that they've been working on for months, ever. So they're gonna be ongoing. I'm sure that'll be a talk and discussion again for next year in front and center, which will make it interesting. And at least it'll give them a little more timing. But again, I, I encourage them to, I'd rather they get something right than to rush it through and get it wrong.
Yeah.
I would say that SF 659 was something we rushed.
That wasn't even legislation that was rushed. That was just throwing language into the kerb still.
Yeah. So. HF 1023 also did not make it out of Senate Ways and Means. I think that was probably by design, but anyway, they did not, so that did not make it.
It was the enhanced requirement for.
It made it all the way to basically.
The final committee.
It made it to within a stride of the finish line. And then didn't. So, on to the back, don't worry about that, don't worry about that. That. I don't need to talk about that. And then. So I'm gonna read this up. I don't know if this is something that is. So. Are you ready?
Oh, no. What are you bringing up?
So got an email. Cindy actually got an email.
Oh, no, no.
And then I got an email, and I've been kind of wrestling around with it throughout the weekend. And then I did talk with Ross a little bit, and I did talk with our sheriff as well. But, and it's maybe something, I don't know if we're gonna have to have a workshop maybe next week, or maybe something on the, no, maybe not. I don't know. But the owner of the speed cameras that we do have a contract with, we still have a contract with, made us aware that there are still 13,000-plus tickets that are out there right now that have not been paid. Those tickets are eligible and have been or will be sent to collection agency. We could expect up to 80% of those as a planning factor, potentially up to 100%, but with, kind of where the industry sits, there's usually between an 80 and 100% recovery of those, which puts us at somewhere south of $1.3 million that is still sitting.
They might recover that high percentage, but they take a percentage of that.
That's just our, that's just our percentage.
It's our percentage.
They take, they take 20%, the county gets 80%. So the tickets, it goes back to what we had before when we had the ATEC cameras. While we no longer have the cameras, all of those tickets were issued at a time when we were completely legal, lawful, and all those tickets were lawfully done.
So those are ATEC 1?
Those, I believe primarily ATEC 2 all of them.
Well, the ones that checked, we got some money for like $5,900.
Yep.
And about half of it is ATEC 1, and the other half is ATEC 2.
So it'll be, it'll be, yeah, it'll be a smearing of both, because again, these tickets, as they come in, some of these people are paying these tickets that are now more than a year old, but the ticket is still there. They did not appeal them. It's still a valid fine. It's still gonna show, show up, show up. So my.
At this point, can they appeal it after?
Nope, because I believe their, I believe their appeals timeframe has gone. Again, I'd have to, I'd have to look. I just want to make it more aware of one. I've, I've got, I got that email. And Cindy got that email, and I got that email. And I have talked with the sheriff, and I have talked with Ross, and we're gonna do a little bit of research on that. But I do not want anyone to think that, A, they don't have to pay those, because that's not true. And B, that the, you know, that we couldn't, we do have the ability to make sure that those are done. And then I guess the other thing, I think that we should have everybody be thinking about. I don't know if this is something we need to put on agenda item for the board to go on whether we're doing this or not. If we would not do this, I would think that the company could stand to lose that 20%, which means we could probably be liable for them.
Under contract.
Under contract.
There would be absolutely no reason not to pursue collecting those.
So again, I just want to make everybody, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so, but I, I know that, we'll look, I'll look at the email. Again, I'll pass it on to the chairman, and then we can see if we need to do something or not do something. But I think they're talking about wanting to talk to board supervisors, so I don't know.
The company?
The company, so they may want to come to a board meeting, but I'll pass the email on to Denise.
And those just got to be sent to the platform about our approval?
Well, I think they already have been. I just, I just, because I think that, I think that, I think the thought is right now is that since the cameras are not running, obviously. Currently, they're not, not only they're not running, they're not even there, not even on the highway. Everything has been removed, and we have not, at this point, pursued, at least at this point, we have not pursued a new permit with the state, and that we do not have any outstanding legislation, or, or, how do you say, legislation? Outstanding legal proceedings with the state that I think some people think they're just, well, okay, it's over, it's done, gone. I don't have to pay nothing, I don't have to do nothing, and that's not accurate.
Right.
So if you've received a ticket previously, that is still a valid ticket. All of this, all of the cameras were shut off or taken down prior to when the legislation or the DOT telling us we can no longer issue tickets. So if you received a ticket, no one received a ticket after the time that we could not issue a ticket.
Right.
So if you received a ticket, that's a ticket you earned. So.
And I will have to get, I will have to get a hold of that too, because I recall that I received a check in the mail from somebody who had gotten a ticket that was out of state. I don't know if it was the school system or.
Sent directly?
But they sent directly to me. So I should probably let them know that I got that money so they can take that off.
Right, because they'll need their percentage of it, yeah. Anyway, so I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I know what I want to really do. What else? I think that was probably a bunch of. And then I don't know if we want to, we're already getting a little bit late. We want to talk about 180th Street on. So I got underneath my things here, I got lots of secondary roads, things are always busy down there. We did get some preliminary documents back. There's continued discussions between COG, DOT, us, everybody on the one-mile stretch of road down there. Ben?
Since we talked about it, let's talk about it. What that is, is there are actually final plans, at least as close as plans can be without specifically being programmed with a specific letting date and funding obligated. Short of that, there are final plans. And those plans were paid for and developed in full cooperation with, but funded by COG. I think there's a shared interest in seeing 180th Street improve. The section that was not improved is part of the RISE project. We've had, and so in doing that, I think there are a number of reasons we need that. It's untenable now. We're not able to maintain the road as it is the shape that we would like to. And certainly not that seems to be suitable to prioritize the plan. The align facilities, specifically the battery facilities locating on that, I can tell you three times in the next, twice in the next five years, maybe three times in 10, 15-year range, where we will have to close the J-50 and the RISE Road project for construction work. And as we, I think, know, and it's well been discussed, that road has flooded, the RISE Road, J-50, when it did flood in 180th Street. So since before the RISE Road was ever put in, we've been adamant that 180th Street should be fixed. There's new ownership at the plant, there's new leadership at Highway DOT. So in the past couple of months, we've been rehashing a lot of things. The, the plant is interested in knowing if they pay for those improvements, will they be able to access Highway 61 to what degree directly from the plant? Now, there are safety concerns, and everyone wants to hold the safety first, but are there solutions, the way maybe we can do some specific turn lanes, specific U-turn lanes in that intersection to make it safer and allow trucks to come out and head north on that way? So that it would be some to prioritize. So those are ongoing. In terms of the DOT part, and what it would look like where 180th Street meets their highway, that's very much up for discussion. But one of the things that's come up is reconfiguring that intersection. Turns out that Levy District in pursuing their interests may have some. reconfiguring that intersection and, um, turns out the levee district in pursuing their interests, uh, may have some interest in what we do there. And so trying to facilitate that as well and bring them into the conversation.
So, uh, I think the last thing that I would mention in there, and I've already mentioned it once, but I'm going to bring it back up again, is because I, I see, uh, we are looking at another RISE grant on Three Hundred Twentieth Street. Uh, we're going to have a discussion about that again. Uh, tomorrow, there's some leadership going down that road. I think at some point we probably need to make sure that the public is catching this. We're talking about it. I'm not for sure that the public, I, I have not heard any comment. And I, at this point, I fully expected to hear some comment from somebody, somewhere. What's that? What's that? Yeah. Effectually known as Tweedy Lane, yes. So Three Hundred Twentieth Street, also known as Tweedy Lane, uh, that runs directly to, uh, the, what used to be the old coal, coal terminal is now the fertilizer terminal. Uh, Hendrickson's made some very large investments out there. Uh, and so their business model has changed. And, uh, so instead of being primarily rail and river traffic, uh, it's going to be a lot of truck traffic. I'm sure that we've already seen an increase in truck traffic on River Road, uh, going toward Airport Lane and out, because that's the only path we have right now. Uh, but there is interest, uh, in, uh, getting a RISE grant to be able to pay Three Hundred Twentieth Street. And so there are, uh, people that are working to that end to see if that is, is, is a possibility and what the potential costs of doing that would be. But that is a significant, and I, I can't say it enough, but that is a significant, uh, project, uh, in, in South Lee that would, you know.
And part of that grant planning process, um, whoever's the lead on that, wouldn't it make sense for them to contact each and every one of the end owners on that road to encourage public input, to invite to a town hall, to something?
Well, I think ti- typical, I think typical of any of those projects is that we're at the early stages and they want to see, we've got to find the money first because it's, it's not an insignificant amount of money.
Right. Oh, yeah.
How many miles is that?
Three and a half. And so the grant application, I believe, I don't know if it would be termed a public hearing, it would be done in a public meeting in Ames.
Oh.
And I'm not sure, unless somebody is on the email list to get board agendas for the Department of Transportation Director, so I don't know if they would be tuned, tuned into that. So, uh, you know, it would, I, I, you know, try to keep it short, but not necessarily, not like you pick up. To pave a road in your five-year program, there's like a point system, and this was implemented, I understand, to make sure people didn't get on the board and then pave the road to their house. So you, you would, um, look at like criteria, you know, traffic levels, uh, outposts, and those paved road, different things like that, like a, a scoring matrix. Um, and if you don't have enough points, then the board is required to have separate hearing for that. I, Trans Lane has a good amount of traffic on it. It may qualify without the hearing. So I don't know if there's going to be amended to it. I'm not sure.
But anytime you embark on a project of this size, it's going to affect secondary roads massively, right? That's going to be another three, someone, three miles plus of paved road, one. Two, engineering-wise and, and dental office is going to impact greatly. Uh, but then more, uh, near, near to my, it's going to impact people on that road greatly. And so I just want to make sure that nobody's missing it.
I, I would like to just add in to the whole conversation that I think the important part from our side, I know I've talked to the sheriff about this, is there are concerning issues. I think we've heard that from some people in the state government as well. As it is now, we would have, you know, forty to fifty trucks, semi-trucks a day could be going down the gravel road where you can't see over, over the hill. You know, a hundred feet down the road, it might be a little bit further than that, but you understand what I'm saying. Um, dust issues, so you have a safety issue there, or we send, we know, we know they can't go up through Montrose. They go south on our scenic byway with our, along the Mississippi River Trail, which unfortunately is only separated from the, uh, roadway by a white line. Um, and then through the Sandusky area where, you know, it's narrow and all that. So there are safety reasons that, um, that Three Hundred Twentieth Street would be seen as beneficial. It's not just, just to serve a business because that's what the private interest wants.
Right, right. And it, it's not only scenic byway, but also believe it's a national bike trail.
It is.
It down, down that road. So it's just, it, it.
So we're, we're asking in, in transportation parlay and what we call vulnerable users, those people without any sort of protective shell around them to be on that road. At, at the same time, you start running fifty, forty-ton loads a day down it. Well, and I believe they're talking about loading that many, so we'd have to double that trip in and trip out.
Yeah. Yeah. So I, I, I think it, it makes a lot of sense. I just, I want to make sure people, I think a lot of times when people hear these things, oh, it'll never happen, it'll never happen. And what I, I guess what I'm telling you is that this is, this is something that I, I'm not going to record saying this, I believe it needs to happen. Uh, purely from a safety standpoint. Uh, I, I don't believe it is that we can put that many trucks on the gravel road wanting to even maintain the road. I don't even know how you maintain a road, uh, gravel road, doing that. Uh, so then if we require them to do what is being required right now, to run down Airport Road or even worse yet, River Road, then I believe that we're putting the public in, I guess I would even use the term very danger, uh, that something bad's going to happen. It's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. So I just want to make sure people are, are catching that. And I think that we need a lot of support, uh, a lot of support, but I want to hear what, what people have to say. I don't have anything else. Is that enough? That was long.
No.
Okay.
He's following him. I'm not going to do that again. Hi, Russ meeting. It's not exciting. He's here, but, um, we did have an issue in our guy. Oh, I think people geared up this time. Somebody tore down a house and then they ran over the Russ equipment. So somebody's not paid for that. Yep. Um, I was in on the development board meeting tomorrow. I have two meetings. Three Hundred Twentieth, I'm the defense. And, um, we have a meeting with the treasurer on the tax option. Yeah. I'm not sure about what that's going to be. So anyway. Anybody else have anything? In the chat, nothing on the tax option?
Yeah, we got a letter.
Becky just came back from somewhere. She probably got some news.
People that pay their taxes.
Couple, send a letter.
Well, okay. Okay, okay. Um, yeah, join the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
That works out great.
No.
Because I can tip, so.
Ginger, when you think of songs, those are that good?
Yeah.
Those words.
Yeah. Worked your main.
I kind of, I'm usually conscious, but I was like, yeah, it's like.
I thought you guys were going to sing.
Oh, God.
Right. It's becoming like a regular thing. It's every month, it's every month. Yeah, yeah. Oh, no, here we go in and we, we sit down for an hour and just talk about whatever's going on, which.
An hour? Yes, that's probably.
It's difficult. It's hard to, it's hard to come up with.
I think it's two.
Hey.
It needs to be more than a second.
Oh, no, go ahead and say it.
Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct me if I'm wrong. Like my most favorite song. Do I do? I want people to remember. It's like, I'm saying something that's not.
When was it?
June fifteenth.
Are you ready?
You do.
Yeah, I'm here. I always said, I have a great show, so it's going to say, I want to see something. I said, I always do that big movie.
Yeah.
You're going to be, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes.
No.
Thirteen. Oh, I can't.
I'll take it. If you, if none of you guys are going to take it, I'll take it. That's why I said.
Well, I got this.
I, I give it to you guys.
Definitely a priority.